All right, yes.
Okay.
So we will include that.
That's fine. Yep.
With the parking.
Okay. You're okay with that, Kathleen? All right, all in favor of the motion? Have your approval, thank you. Yes. Okay, now we go back to number 27, 96 Gladstone Avenue. Purpose of this application is to construct a one-story detached garage at the rear of an existing three-story semi-detached dwelling. And we have before us material submitted by the committee, opposition from 94, 98, 107 Waterloo Avenue. Is the opposition here?
Yes, they are.
Okay, you come forward and sit in this row here. So were your discussions fruitful? What's your name, first of all?
My name is Ian Cunha. I'm representing the owners of 96 Gladstone.
Right, okay. So were your discussions fruitful?
Maybe. Depends on what I say here that she might agree with. Like outside, no, there wasn't much that we could agree on because I think they've already had a discussion with the architect on this particular item. There's been changes already made to the project. Their garage was reduced. You do have the new zoning bylaw, the new zoning review. I was asked to bring new drawings in case you didn't have the set here, which I brought the set for everybody.
Wait a minute. We don't want any paper we don't need unless we don't have it.
The staff that asked me to bring them, so that's why I brought them.
When were they revised?
September the 5th. So I actually have a zoning review that was done on September the 5th that reduced the variances.
So are the variances we have reduced? We have floor area of the garage 50.55 square meters.
Yes, that was reduced.
Pardon? It's reduced?
That was reduced to 44.55. The soft landscaping was increased from 38% to 42%.
Okay, and you have revised plans?
Yes.
Better hand them in to the Deputy Secretary of Treasure.
So yeah, 51.06 square meters for the soft landscaping. The other reduction we made was not a variance, but the architect agreed to reduce the height of the garage by one foot. So the garage, instead of being four meters, which is allowed by zoning by law, it's 3.7 meters. But that was not a variance. So we're just agreed with the owners with the next door to reduce to 3.7.
Okay. So I think we should hear from the neighbor now.
Sure.
Come forward.
Subliminary matter. I noticed that one of my neighbors wanted to submit something, and they did last night. A letter. I just wanted to make sure that you had a copy of it in your file. It's from, my name is Gabriela Kuntz, 94 Gladstone.
So what's the neighbor's name?
It's Katie McCormick and Philippe Blanchard. They live at 90 Gladstone Avenue, and I have three copies of their letter.
You better hand it in. I don't think we have it in our file. Okay, we have a letter in opposition from 90 Gladstone Avenue. Okay, can you, so we have your name, and you can tell us what your objection is?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I live next door at 96 Gladstone Avenue, and I have just a few points to make.
No, you don't live at 90.
Oh, sorry, 94 Gladstone, sorry. This, the house at 96 Gladstone has been under construction for a number of years. The house has been built to such a scale and depth and as big as they possibly can make it in terms of its...
Just a minute, we're only talking about the garage.
I know, but it's actually all important. It's very important to address all of these issues. So that space is actually maxed out in terms of its size and its grander. And that plan was submitted in December of 2015. The original plan for this particular garage was also submitted or made or designed in December 2015, but the owners didn't submit it at the same time because they're trying to be sneaky. What they're trying to do is build as big a house as they possibly can, and then, once it's built, submit a garage plan knowing that if they submitted them both together, they would never be able to build the house as big as it is. And then just ask you guys for variances.
Wait a minute. Please don't attribute motives. Just tell us what your complaints about the garage are.
Okay.
That's the only issue before us. You may be right, but that's the only issue before us.
It should be taken into consideration by the committee, though. I mean, these kinds of practices shouldn't be allowed. You know, it affects basically the scope of what's allowable under the bylaws if we allow contractors to do this.
We're not the police. So please tell us about...
Okay, I'll tell you what my biggest issue is. Our neighborhood where we live is currently under a flood program to review how much flooding we have. It's a two-year study that was just undertaken because our neighborhood is really subject to flooding. So under the Planning Act, I reviewed that the committee is supposed to take into consideration the provincial policy regarding applications and soft landscaping. So Section 2.2.1 deals with stormwater, and it basically says that the committee is supposed to take into consideration protecting the existing vegetative services and pervious services. That includes soft landscaping. So what I want to show the committee is a video of the amount of water that is coming out of this house because the way that it's built is it's so large in the back that all of the water on the back is pouring out, and it has created a pit in my house. The result is that I had to call somebody to move it, to deal with this issue. So that's, you'll see that at Exhibit 1 of my letter that I provided to you. I don't know if you need to look at that.
No, I remember it, but...
Well, I have a copy of it here.
We don't get very, oh, yeah, this Exhibit 3?
Exhibit 1. This is what happened with the amount of, there were three different eaves troughs that were placed between my house and their house. This created a large area cavernous.
This is it?
Yeah, that's it.
This is Mark Exhibit 3?
And I did submit it in color. So the result is, is that the neighbor, dealing with this, was kind enough to move it. So what they did was they moved it to the other side. So my house is here and a cavern was here. They moved it to this side. I want you to see the amount of water that is pooling down here. Look at the amount of water. It's pooling, and it's creating a massive problem in my yard and the neighbor's yard. And what I want you to do is I want you to look at the amount of water coming out of theirs.
How is a garage going to affect it?
Okay, well, the soft landscaping is supposed to be at 50%. What they're proposing, though, is 42% originally and now down to 38%.
No, no. Originally 38, now up to 42%. That's as I understand.
Yes, yes, originally, yeah, that's correct. But the problem is, is that the plans don't reflect the fact that this has already been placed, this is already hard landscaping here. If you look at the plans, they're covered in hard landscaping. So their plans about this is how much law of soft landscaping I have isn't true. This is a massive problem for me. I've already had to call the city about flooding in my basement because of what's happened. I just want the committee to keep that into consideration when they're building a garage. I'm not suggesting that they can't have a garage. What I'm suggesting is that the garage be made as small as possible to accommodate their needs and to have as much soft landscaping as possible because flooding is really a issue here.
So is this a double garage or a single garage?
Well, it's a double garage that they're proposing. And, you know, the revised garage that they're submitting is reduced on the sides by .4 inches, meters, sorry, sorry, centimeters? Inches? Inches, four inches. And the proposed garage in depth and length compared to mine is now just this much bigger. So it's 6.4 to mine it's 6.3. I have a large SUV in my garage. It's a Honda Pilot. You really can't get much bigger than that. My Honda Pilot, I'll show you in my garage. I have a chariot in the front. I have tires in the front of my car. I have a full meter in front of my car. I can fit my car in here.
And how big is your garage?
My garage is 6.3. They want to build a 6.4. That's their revised plan. I'm saying it doesn't even need to be that big. And so at Exhibit 6, I told you how big standard garages are, cars are, that are supposed to be there. I'm proposing that this garage be six meters at the most, not 6.4. Make it six. They can clearly fit a standard-sized car, which is 4.5 meters.
How's that going to affect your situation with the water?
Well, what that will do is it will increase the amount of soft landscaping they have in the backyard, which will deal with the amount of water that's coming off of their house, and that will help us. The most landscaping they can have back there, the better we are. Because that plan, what they're showing up there and all that nice green grass, that's not true. That's just not true. It's not even what they're saying it is. But I'm trying to be reasonable, and I'm trying to say, fine, have a garage, but can you make it as small as you possibly can?
At the beginning, you mentioned about city understand that you have flooding problem. Do you know if your area is under any designated flood plain?
Well, Exhibit number 2, Exhibit number 2, you can see is, it shows that we're part of the study in the City of Toronto for the flood study.
So it's only the study but not a designated flood plain yet, okay?
So...
But it is already in approach?
But it's such a huge, massive problem in our neighborhood. We have Garrison Creek that's literally right underneath our properties.
And you have talked to the applicant before this?
Yeah, and...
If you're refusing to bring it down to six, they want...
Yeah, and they were great. And they did move the three eaves troughs from between our two properties because they built it so close to mine that really, and it's nowhere, just it's crazy, the amount of water that came out. I was like freaking out. They did move it, but it doesn't take away from the fact that they just moved it over to my other neighbor's house and creating the problem over there. You know, that water's got to go somewhere. Let's try to make sure that they've got as much pervious ground as possible to swallow it up. My next point is that the proposed garage has an overhang of 1.2 meters, okay? So they want to build this garage, the house will be over here, and they want to have an overhang that's 1.2 meters. Well, none of the houses in our neighborhood have, first of all, a big giant box. They're all peaked, and none of them are 13 feet high, and they've agreed to reduce it to 12 feet. But what they've essentially done is, okay, we'll make it six feet, but I'm going to add another entire meter overhang into the backyard, which will prevent grass from growing. I'm just saying, remove that or make it so that it's a regular eaves trough, which is a foot. That's what everybody else has. There's no need to have this giant overhang of a whole 1.2 meters over top of this garage.
It's not in the variance. I don't think that overhang is counted into any of these variances, so we can't really...
No, but it does affect the soft landscaping again. If the soft landscaping doesn't grow because you've put this up, it's out of character with the rest of the garages, and that's something that the committee can take into consideration when they're deciding on a garage. So, you know, I've put together what I think is a reasonable, a reasonable solution to our problem, and they're basically to reduce the width of the garage as far back as can, and I think that that's six meters. You could go even further, but I think six meters is, I'm willing to live with six meters. Keep the proposed, the new proposal, which is four inches on either side away from the property line from each, both garages. Eliminate the overbuilt design. The bigness of this massive house, which is so oversized, combined with this oversized big boxy garage, it just contributes to the overall look of this property, which is out of line with all the other ones. I just think it should match, and it should be peaked, and you shouldn't have that overhang. I think it impedes the soft landscaping, which to me is the most important thing. And I'm happy that they reduced it to 12 feet in height. Just, I would prefer it to be peaked.
So variance number one, they've reduced the floor area of the garage to 44.58 square meters. Is that okay with you?
No, I want it down to six meters, and then that would make it 41.76 meters.
Forty-one?
Yeah.
Down to which, sorry?
If they reduce the side, the depth of the garage, the width, the length of the garage, I don't know what I'm using. There's the width, right, between the two, and then there's the length as it goes into their house, that area. If they reduce that to six feet, six meters, sorry, that reduces the square footage in total to 41.76 meters. It's still oversized, however, I think that that's...
Forty-one point what?
Seven-six.
Square meters.
Yeah, and I think that that's a good solution for everybody involved here because that would allow us to have more green grass in the backyard.
Tell us about the, are you happy with 50? Wow, you've got to be happy with 50% soft landscaping.
But that won't, it won't get anywhere near 50% landscaping with that, but it will be an improvement, and I'm willing to live with it.
Okay, so you're, you think they can improve from 42%?
I think that by reducing the size of the garage down to six meters in length, that will increase the amount of soft landscaping. I didn't do the calculation at all for the purposes of today, but it won't get it up to 50 because in order to do that, they have to reduce their garage by nine square meters.
Okay, all right.
And they can't do it. Nine square meters is like, basically, they can have one-car garage.
Does anybody have any...
And I, you know, like, I'm not saying that they have to do that, but I'm saying, let's have a mitigated, you know, something that we can both live with here.
All right, we understand your position. Does anybody have any further questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Cunha.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just going over these zoning variances that we have. This is basically as of 2013. So prior to 2013, we actually wouldn't have to be here to the Committee of Adjustment. We would just be able to get a building permit because 50% landscaping was not required, and the 40 square meters was also not required. So what that means is there's lots of precedents on the street all over in Toronto that these garages were originally going from property line to property line for, mostly for security reasons, is because a lot of people have access to from the, from the laneway. To the point that the actual next-door neighbor, number 98, we measured their garage, there it's a 51 square meters. What you're looking at is number 94, where this lady lives, where she supplies absolutely no soft landscaping.
That's not true. I'm actually within the bylaw.
While I'm looking at the picture...
No, but you didn't do the math, and I did, and I am within the bylaw. You're not looking at it. You're not seeing all the grass on the side. Don't lie. That's not fair.
I'm looking at your picture of your house.
But you're not seeing the whole thing.
All right, all right. So let's not have any discussions. You say one thing, she says another. Okay, so...
In any case, what she said was correct. That drawing that I had there, none of that landscaping is there because the garage hasn't been built yet. So when the garage is built, all that landscaping that I showed on the site plan will be built. As far as any water from the roof of this garage, we have a driveway, a public driveway on the front, and all the roof is going to be sloping towards the driveway, and that's where the water from the roof will be going towards. So if you see that truck, that's the driveway that is there for access to the property.
Is that a driveway or a laneway?
It's a city driveway.
No, it's a laneway.
Okay, it's a city laneway. It's a public laneway.
All right, thank you.
So as far, I'm looking at basically the variances that we have. I believe they're minor. We've made every attempt to reduce the garage to the point where I think at 6.4 meters, I believe that's, the garage is 6.4 meters long. It's just a little over 20 feet. You know, if you want to put a car in, like, inside this garage, there's not that much left in length. The width, yes, we have width, but we just don't have that much length. In the fact that there's plenty of garages in this neighborhood that are either the same size or bigger than what we're proposing, I believe these variances are minor, and I hope this committee will allow us to build this garage with the drawings that you have before you.
Have any further, anybody have any questions?
Is the grading on that at the back of the garage? Is it sloping towards the laneway?
Yes, it'll be sloping towards the laneway. There will be a scupper there that will pick up the water, and the water will be going into the laneway.
Okay, was that in the drawing?
It's in the drawings, and on top of it all, the city inspector will always make sure that that's done properly.
Is this a laneway with properly sloped in the middle so the water runs down, and there's a sewer there, etc.?
I believe it's a laneway that has catch basins, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a particular rationale about why, maybe I missed that, about why you need to be over in your floor space for a garage? Like, is there a reason? Did you want to achieve some storage space, or do you have huge curves, or what's the rationale?
No, it mostly is to go from property line to property line to basically give, because if you leave space between our garage and the next-door neighbor's garage, it's just a place for garbage to accumulate. So the city allows us to go from property line to property line. That's why we don't have a variance before us. So that's why they do it that way. And the length, it's only 6.4 meters. The interior of the garage, under the zoning bylaw, cannot be less than 5.6. So when you take the 5.6 plus the thicknesses of the walls, you're basically there. They don't have much room to maneuver to reduce the length of the garage.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Just tell me again.
Yes.
So the variances, the variance number one, you're talking about the floor area now being reduced from the 50.55 that's listed to 44.55?
Correct.
Okay, so that's one correction.
Yes.
And the other is in number two, 38% landscaping to...
Forty-two, correct. So the square meters, originally was 46.55 square meters. We're going with 51.06 square meters now. And this was reviewed by the zoning examiner on September the 5th.
The numbers that you're proposing are minor, but the impact on your neighbor is not minor. So I'm just suggesting that you're putting in a condition that the slope of your drive, of your roof, the overhang, sorry, and the overall backyard that you're paving will only be sloping towards the laneway but not to your neighbor.
Well, we, under the...
Is it like that, right? Okay.
Under the building code and the inspection, we cannot drain onto our neighbor's property.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't take care of the amount of water coming off the house.
We're not dealing with the house, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So...
Tie together into the soft landscaping.
We're now in committee, so we're not receiving any further testimony. All right, so that's your motion of approval?
Your approval.
Okay, do we have a secondary?
With the adjustment that you mentioned?
Correct.
Forty-four, one, five, five, and forty-two.
Yes.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended. Through you, Mr. Chair, will you be tying those to the revised plans filed? That decision? Thank you.
Okay, we have a secondary for the motion? Yes, we have a second, all in favor. Have your approval, sir. Okay, now we go to the 230. Okay, now I'm going to vet the 230 list. Number 31, 117 Clifton Road, is the applicant here? Are there, is there any opposition or anybody in support? Okay, we'll proceed with that. Number 32, 233 Inglewood Drive, applicant? Yes, do we, do we have any opposition here? No. 33, number 153, McLean Avenue, has any opposition? Number 34, 33 Naismith Avenue, yes, and any opposition? 35, 77 Wiley Avenue, any, any opposition? 36, 25 Yarmouth Gardens, any opposition? No, okay. 37, 800 Manning Avenue, yes, any opposition? 38, 184 Swanwick Avenue, applicant? Am I missing somebody?
No.
Oh, there, okay. Any opposition? 39, 117 Algonquin Avenue, yes, any opposition to Algonquin? 40, 14 Frankish Avenue, yes, any opposition? Okay, let's start with 31. 117 Clifton Road. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a covered front porch, rear two-story addition that steps down to one story at the north side, ground floor deck and rear attached detached shed, and we only have material from the applicant on this one. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Gloria Postel. I'm the architect and applicant. We, as you mentioned, we're proposing a rear story addition. What we have done is just basically align the addition with the house, and I should clarify that the addition, the floor space is not a variance, and we actually have a building permit to build that floor area. What we couldn't do without coming to Committee of Adjustment is getting permission to take down the garage. And so we wanted to take down the garage and be able to build a rear deck and build an accessory structure at the rear of the lot. So those are the variances that were triggered by this proposal.
All right, so variances number five and number one, you're going, parking space, you're going to narrow the width to 2.43 inches. Is there any structures on either side of that?
There is a structure on our side. Our house is bounding that, and then the property line with a little bit of space on the other side of the property line.
We took some training, and we saw a picture of a car in the parking space, and it was reduced width, and it had concrete barriers or something. Couldn't open the door.
Yeah.
So are you going to be able to open the door with cars?
Yes. So the driveway is not getting any narrower than it is. Our rear addition steps in by four... Our rear addition steps in by four inches, but that's the existing condition and that's the driveway that they currently use. So we're not any closer to the...
Parking space, huh?
Parking space, yeah.
Okay, all right, any other questions?
Just curious, are you, based on your knowledge, does this land, are you required to have one parking space? Is that the reason why you are applying for one with a reduce rather than taking out one?
That's right, yeah. So it's a smaller spot instead of no parking at all.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a secondary? Okay, secondary, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
You have your approval, thank you. They don't see you. Number 32, 233 Inglewood Drive. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a one-story side addition near rear two-story addition, rear bay window and rear basement walkout. We have before us materials submitted by the applicant and correspondence from the planning department. And there's one, one variance length, okay.
Lauren Rose, the architect, it's a bay window. We have a building permit and the client decided they want it two extra feet, so we applied. And we're here for a bay window.
Is it expensive, bay window?
Yeah, I agree with you.
But it's going to change the whole house. All right, do we have any questions or do we have a motion?
I'm, we accept it as is.
Okay, you second the motion?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, you have your approval, Mr. Chair. Number 33, 153 McLean Avenue. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition and before us we have materials submitted by the applicant. Your name, sir?
My name is Rockim.
Okay, and we have floor space, a very small floor space index variance. Does anybody have any questions or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support, variance appears to be very minor.
All right, any, a secondary?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor. You have your approval, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Number 34, 33 Naismith Avenue. Purpose of this application is to eliminate the required rear yard parking space for the existing semi-detached dwelling. Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant, correspondence from Heritage Planning and correspondence in opposition from 294 and 296 Sumac. Your name, please.
Good afternoon, Monica Kuhn. I'm the architect and agent for the owners. Just to clarify, that letter of opposition is not really a letter of opposition against us. It's more a letter of opposition against the process that requires us to be here to ask for a removal of this parking space that we can't get into, anyway.
Oh, this is the parking space.
Another parking space.
We want to know why, but it's really not our business, so...
Well, we can't legally do anything with the backyard because we are forced to maintain a hardscape parking space in the backyard. So any kind of re-landscaping, an addition, anything like that would trigger this variance. And so we'd like to just get rid of it and then we can deal with the backyard as per right under the bylaw. So I just wanted to show you, on the map there is the street, Naismith. There are some houses that have garages, but they are, I don't think any of them that are not accessed from a lane are actually accessible by car or even used to park a car. Do you want to show the photos? So you can see, this is 33 and 31. There's the space between the houses and because you can't fit a car down there, they've already, people have started putting parking and air conditioners. And even the hydrometer is in the way. Here's one, I think, at nine and seven where you can see the width of the car and all the garbage cans are there, gates are at the back already, again, hydrometers.
You can see the garbage bins are taking over.
Yes, they are. And here's one where you can see that people have put the air conditioners hanging from the wall, which would also block a car and again, storage and everything else. So what we want to apply for is just to get rid of the requirement for that imaginary parking space in the backyard. You can't park in this driveway. Everybody parks on the street. Everybody has a permit on the street. So we just want to legalize that.
Right, I'll take a motion.
Yes, a secondary?
I'll take a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
All in favor, have your approval, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number 35, 77 Wiley Avenue. And purpose of this application to alter the existing one-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front porch, second-story addition, rear two-story addition, rear ground floor deck and second-floor balcony and rear yard parking pad. Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant and two form letters in support.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. We're here to submit the application for...
We have your name, please.
My name's Manuel Guillen. I'm the authorized agent of Sylvia and David Stewart, registered owners. We're here for, to apply for this minor variances that have been triggered. The proposal is a very common dwelling, which is a two-story dwelling with three bedrooms on the second story. And it's transforming a one-and-a-half story that is the equivalent of a two-bedroom apartment currently. The variances, to speak about them a little bit, what is being triggered? We have roof eaves projecting on the one side of the house, but these are all legal non-conforming situations. The architect has been very careful to maintain the existing footprint of the house as much as possible and the only addition to the footprint itself has been a very minor mudroom at the rear, still within the actual footprint and restraints of the house. So if you can see in the projector, that's basically the small addition that's adding into the footprint. So it's very minor, just for a mudroom. Regarding the roof eaves, you can also see that the actual neighbor on the south has completely supported this application and that's the person who would be directly affected by the roof eaves being close to that, to that, on that side, that south side. To address the other variances, the maximum permitted lot coverage of 35%, we're also requesting a 39%. However, this has been reduced throughout the years. Originally, this house was built with a very large garage that dated back in the 1920s. This was taken down in order to increase the backyard and to reduce the lot coverage. You're seeing on a very old site survey and this is what the current backyard sits as of now. We obviously have an existing framed shed, but it's not taking out nearly as much lot coverage as the old garage used to do. Again, this also is being triggered, a 50% landscaping, a soft landscaping bylaw that we have to also apply for. This is because we have to maintain a parking requirement at the rear where the garage used to be, so that's affecting the soft landscaping. Now, I just wanted to show you this photo to illustrate that our clients are very inclined towards soft landscaping and this is a photo of their driveway. So what we're going to be doing is doing a lot of landscaping work in order to maintain the soft landscaping, even though we are already soliciting for this, this minor variance. And in the second bylaw, again, it's also being triggered by a non-conforming situation where the existing footprint just happens to have a very minor south yard setback.
Anyone have any questions? We have a motion?
Motion to approve?
All right, secondary?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, have your approval, sir. Number 36, 25 Yarmouth Gardens. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story and partial two-story addition having access to a rooftop deck over the one-story portion. We have before us materials submitted by the applicant and support, correspondence and support from 10, 31 and 26 and six form letters in support. Your name, madam?
Laura McKinnis of Laura McKinnis Design, representing the owner.
Yeah, this is pretty minor. Do we have any questions? Or do we have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion, the variances are fairly minor.
Okay.
To support.
We have a secondary?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, you have your approval, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number 37, 500, no, 800 Manning Avenue. Purpose of this application is to convert the basement of the existing two-story converted townhouse into a secondary suite for a total of one dwelling unit and two secondary suites to enlarge the rear two-story addition and to complete the construction of a covered porch with basement walkout. Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant and six, six signature petition in support. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Nelson Spinola and I'm here as the agent for this application.
Okay, perhaps you can tell us something about this. There's quite a few variances requested.
Yes, our project here entails the legalization of the existing dwelling to three-family. We got a permit approximately, issued approximately four years ago for two dwelling units and we're here now for the extra unit down in the basement. The rear addition was constructed approximately 0.6 meters bigger than it was initially approved as well as the front veranda was constructed as well, slightly bigger than what it was approved.
So these are secondary suites for rental? So are there multiple unit dwellings on this street?
Yes, there is. There's a variety of two and three-family dwellings throughout this street.
Okay, all right, does anyone have any further questions or do we have a motion?
Pardon? Yeah. So, have a motion to support, to approve your application?
All right, do we have a secondary?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, have your approval, sir. Okay, number 38, 184 Swanwick Avenue. Okay, purpose of this application is to alter the one-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition with a rear second-story balcony and before us we have materials submitted by the applicant. Only, your name, sir?
Jay Smith, I'm the agent for 184 Swanwick Avenue. We asked the neighbor for a letter of support. They've kind of jumped the gun and I've actually already signed their party wall permit application, so I guess that's a letter of support.
Okay, so this is an application for a permit to construct or demolish?
That's the party wall permit for 182, so when we do the construction, we asked them for a letter of support and they've kind of jumped ahead and already signed for the building permit for the work, but they're putting the cart, or the cart ahead of the horse, but they are in support.
We'll file this, then. Okay, does anyone have any questions? It seems relatively minor. We have a motion?
Motion again?
A motion to approve this application.
We have a secondary?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Number 38, 17 Algonquin Avenue.
39.
39.
17, that's just the number.
Yeah, 39, 17 Algonquin Avenue, it's my glasses.
Hi.
Purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by reconstructing and enlarging the rear second-floor addition and third-floor balcony above. Before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning and correspondence in support from 13, 15, 10, 21 and 7 Algonquin Avenue. Your name, sir?
Neil Deall, I'm the owner.
Okay, so we have one variance requested, a very minor one, enlarge the floor space index to 0.73. Does anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
I have no problem with this. The variance is relatively minor. The community planning department apparently had no objections, so I'd like to put forward a motion to support the application.
All right, secondary?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, have your approval, sir. Thank you. Okay, number 40, 14 Frankish Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to demolish and reconstruct the rear two-story addition of an existing two-story townhouse. And before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant and who's going to speak?
I think it's going to be me. I'm the owner.
What's your name?
Aaron Miller.
Okay, this seems, do we need a presentation or anybody have any questions or do we have a motion?
Very self-explained and...
Yeah, very straightforward.
I'll put a motion to approve your application.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a secondary? Say, speak up.
Kathleen.
Okay, all in favor, have your approval, thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
Okay, now, we've dealt with that list. We dealt with this list, now we've got to deal with 330, yes. Oh, it's not 330 yet. How do we do that? All right, we'll be back at 3:30. Yeah. 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 Okay. Okay. So I'm going to vet the 330 list at this point. Good. Applicant? Yes, okay. Any opposition? No? Okay. 43, 22 Grange Avenue. Applicant? Any opposition? Yes, okay. We'll hold that one down. 44, 8 Belfair Avenue. Applicant? Any opposition? Okay. 45, 26 Coates Avenue. Applicant? Is there an applicant? Oh, I can't... You're hiding there. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Any opposition? Yeah, okay. Well, we'll hold that's last anyhow, but we'll hold it down. Purpose of this application is to demolish and reconstruct the rear two-story addition of an existing two-story townhouse, and before us, we have materials submitted by the applicant. And who's going to speak?
I think it's going to be me. I'm the owner.
What's your name?
Aaron Miller.
Right, okay. So, um... Okay, this seems... Do we need a presentation, or anybody have any questions, or do we have a motion?
Very self-explained and...
Yeah, very straightforward.
I'll put a motion to approve your application.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second, or... Say, speak up.
Kathleen.
Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Okay. Now... No, we've dealt with that list. We dealt with this list. Yep, got to deal with 330 list. Oh, it's not 330 yet. How did we do that? All right, we'll be back at 330.
I did.
I know.
There you go.
Thank you.
These are going to be a bit more controversial. These ones?
Yeah. Same.
It's...
You can't go wrong with it.
It's the last one.
You can't go wrong with it.
It's the last one.
You can't go wrong with it.
It's the last one.
These ones?
Yeah.
Same.
It's the last one.
You can't go wrong with it.
It's the last one.
You can't go wrong with it.
It's the last one.
Okay. So do you have other pictures?
Yes. So these are the ones on McRoberts. So this is 490. The picture's on there. There can be a render of it, what is happening. 520. 524.
Was that, was that four units, that other one?
That is two units.
Two units?
Yes.
Okay. So how wide are they?
That I would not be able to tell you. I could look it up quickly on recent approvals from Committee of Adjustment and get you the answer. But we've heard look at the garage, that's about 12 feet. Yeah, around there.
14. If I'm just scaling from the picture, yeah. 14 per inch, and then you add, well, it's about 45. And then that's five feet back, it's probably 50 feet wide. Two, two.
So that's about the same size as one more time.
Yeah. And then there's also on Caledonia, the one that was just approved. And that is just right above on Caledonia. That was just approved a few months ago. And that has multiple balconies and on the front and the rear.
I didn't get that far. I only saw five, five-something meters wide, reject. Okay, all right, go ahead.
To go over a few of the variances, I guess I'll just do part A for the townhouses. There's part A and part B, and they're all pretty much mirrored over. Some of the... So on number four variance, we... The permitted height for front exterior main wall is 8.5. The proposed is 10.3. So if I could just show the front elevation. We tried to limit the amount of impact on the street. First, we were at 11.3, but then talking to zoning, we were able to reduce it to 10.3. And they take it to this point right here. But we dropped the, lowered the roof on the sides of it to try to hide that impact, and those are projecting out, those rooms in the back as well. It's just like the dormer, a room projecting out, and the recesses back in on the rear elevation. Number five, the permitted height of a main pedestrian entrance above established grade is 1.2. We're proposing 1.3. If you look at the north elevation, you could see that the rear grade increases, and there's only one step in the back while there's a few steps in the front. Number six, we're trying to match the dwelling length of the house beside us. You could see that we're in line with the dwellers, the dwellings beside us as well.
We have different numbers. That's number seven in our...
All right, part B or part A?
Pardon?
Part B or part A?
I'm at 41B. Part one.
Part A, that's what I'm doing right now? Part A? Is that the one we're on? Sorry.
No, and ours are numbered 41B, part one, and 41C, part two.
Oh, maybe I looked at the wrong page.
Who is?
I'm just going to... Probably myself.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just going to read out the full thing and then try to match it to the variance that's going on there. Apologize.
Okay, well, but we're at, you're at number seven.
Number seven, oh, no, number, I was going to do, number eight, the permitted maximum number of balconies at above and second story, we're proposing two. But the, we're willing to do what the examiner said to do, is do a six-foot privacy screen on the sides of them. We're willing to do that, just to give privacy on that factor. Number 13, the rear yard setback for a garage, you know, they're saying one meter, we're proposing .6. Couple of things on that one is because we have a few trees in the middle, we're trying to save two. I know it's, I know it's a foot, but you know, kind of giving that extra chance for those roots. I know it's the, whatever the tree blossoms, that's how much the roots are underneath, right? So we're trying to, trying to limit the cause on that factor, too. And number 15, the 10% of the garage, the loudest 10%, we're proposing 18%. That's actually taken with the overhang. If we were to take out the overhang...
Okay, so I'm going to vet the 330 list at this point. Forty-one, Two-Ninety-One Caledonia Road, is the applicant here? Is there any opposition? Good. Forty-two, One-Forty-Five Chaplain Crescent, applicant? Yes, okay, any opposition? No? Okay, forty-three, Twenty-two Grange Avenue, applicant? Any opposition? Yes, okay, we'll hold that one down. Forty-four, Eight Belfair Avenue, applicant? Any opposition? Okay. Forty-five, Twenty-six Coates Avenue, applicant? Is there an applicant? Oh, you're hiding there, okay. Yeah? Yeah, okay. Any opposition? Yeah, okay, well, we'll hold that's last anyhow, but we'll hold it down. Okay, let's start with forty-one. Purpose of this application is to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. And we have material from the applicant and we have staff reports from planning, engineering, and urban forestry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Richard Dobchuk, and I'm here from Gaspar Designs Group, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of Two-Ninety-One Caledonia Road. We come before you trying to sever the property. Before we do so, I have two letters of support, that from the neighbors, but everyone else rents there, so it was very hard to get letters of support.
Yeah, all right, bring it forward, and I'll read it into the record. Two-Ninety-seven Caledonia Road and Two-Ninety-five Caledonia Road provided letters of support. Thank you. All right, so what I'm curious about before we get to variations, et cetera, is are there any other lots?
Oh, yes, I could have a map.
Any street that are that size, that narrow?
Yes, I have a map of showing all the...
Okay, please.
As you can see, Two-Ninety-One is in the middle there, and showing the street right behind us is McRoberts, that is doing a lot of severing properties, three stories. And then also, just recently, Three-Forty-Six Caledonia just got approved to do a three-story, three balconies.
No, no, I'm not talking about three stories, I'm talking about...
Yeah, severed, H property there was severed?
Yeah, so they're...
Yeah, I have pictures of all them, too.
Less than six meters?
This one. That was on Caledonia and Rogers, it's a development happening there that was just recently approved.
Just a minute, that's quite far, isn't it?
Oh, it's just on the corner, south corner. We're at Caledonia and Rogers, and it's on the south side.
What street is that, on Rogers?
That is...
That is One-Forty-Six, McRoberts.
Oh, One-Seventy-Seven Caledonia Road, sorry, my apologies.
One-seventy-seven?
One-seventy-seven Caledonia.
It said Forty-six and Forty-eight on the houses.
Pardon? It's a multiple development happening there, which has the same width of what we're trying to achieve.
Oh, you mean those are unit numbers?
Yes, yeah. That's just the rendering of what is happening there. Right now, they just excavated the parcel of land, and they're developing as we speak right now.
It's all been approved?
Yes, it has.
Okay. So, do you have other pictures?
Yes. So, these are the ones on McRoberts. So, this is Four-Ninety. The picture's on there, gonna be a render of it, what is happening. Five-Twenty.
Was that, was that four units, that other one?
That is two units.
Two units?
Yes.
Okay. So, how wide are they?
That I would not be able to tell you. I could look it up quickly on recent approvals from Committee of Adjustment and get you But we've heard look at the garage, that's about twelve feet. Yeah, around there.
Fourteen. If I'm just scaling from the picture, fourteen per inch, and then you add, I think, about forty-five, and then that five feet setback is probably fifty-three wide, two-two.
So, that's about the same sizes, one more time.
Yeah. And then there's also on Caledonia, the one that was just approved. And that is just right above on Caledonia, that was just approved a few months ago. And that is multiple balconies and on the front and the rear.
I didn't get that far, I only saw five-something meters wide, reject. Okay, all right, go ahead.
To go over a few of the variances, I guess I'll just do part A for the townhouses, there's part A and part B, and they're all pretty much mirrored over. Some of the, so on number four variance, we, the permitted height for front exterior main wall is eight-point-five, the proposed is ten-point-three, so if I could just show the front elevation. We tried to limit the amount of impact on the street. First, we were at eleven-point-three, but then talking to zoning, we were able to reduce it to ten-point-three, and they take it to this point right here. But we dropped the, lowered the roof on the sides of it to try to hide that impact, and those are projecting out, those rooms, and the back as well. It's just like the dormer, a room projecting out, and the recesses back in on the rear Number five, the permitted height of a main pedestrian entrance above established grade is one-point-two, we're proposing one-point-three. If you look at the north elevation, you could see that the rear grade increases, and there's only one step in the back while there's a few steps in the front. Number six, we're trying to match the dwelling length of the house beside us, you could see that we're in line with the dwellers, the dwellings beside us as well.
We have different numbers, that's number seven in our...
All right, part B or part A?
Pardon?
Part B or part A?
I'm at Forty-One B. Part one.
Part A, that's what I'm doing right now? Part A? Is that the one we're on? Sorry.
No, and ours are numbered Forty-One B, part one, and Forty-One C, part two.
Oh, maybe I looked at the wrong page.
Who is?
I'm just gonna, probably myself.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm just gonna read out the full thing and then try to match it to the variance that's going on there, apologize.
Okay, well, but we're at, you're at number seven.
Number seven, oh, no, number, I was gonna do, number eight, the permitted maximum number of balconies at above and second story, we're proposing two, but the, we're willing to do what the examiner said to do, is do a six-foot privacy screen on the sides of them, we're willing to do that, just to give privacy on that factor. Number thirteen, the rear yard setback for a garage, you know, they're saying one meter, we're proposing point-six. Couple things on that one is because we have a few trees in the middle, we're trying to save two. I know it's, I know it's a foot, but, you know, kind of giving that extra chance for those roots. I know it's the, whatever the tree blossoms, that's how much the roots are underneath, right? So, we're trying to, trying to limit the cause on that factor, too. And number fifteen, the ten percent of the garage, the loudest ten percent, we're proposing eighteen percent, that's actually taken with the overhang. If we were to take out the overhang, we're only, we would be at fifteen percent.
In general, you understand alignment, development?
Yes, we've been back and forth for a while now, we've done everything, tried to...
Forestry?
Yes.
Three?
Okay, so, anybody have any further que, you understand, you know, engineering has two conditions, and planning has two conditions?
Yes.
So, you're aware of those?
Yeah, we saw the reports and everything, so, and forestry had a...
Forestry, with respect to part two, Forty-One C has a condition as well? Yeah, F-two?
Yes.
Okay, so, does anybody have any further questions, or do we have a motion to consent to sever the property? We have to do, we'll do it all together, but consent to sever, and then we'll do the variances, part one and part two.
Okay, I'll have a motion to approve consent of the application.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Thank you so much.
So, the motion to consent to sever has been, you have a consent, now do we have a motion with respect to approve the variances in part two? Wait a minute, well, this is, this is wrong, I guess, it's, yeah, it's a typo, yeah, it should be part one. Okay, we have a motion to approve the variances in part one.
I'll forward a motion to approve variances in part one.
Okay, do we have a second, or?
Not a second.
All right, all in favor? Have your approval for part one, and same motion for part two?
Yes.
Okay, and second, all right, all in favor of the variances of part two, approving the variances of part two, you have your approval. See her, you voted, see her? You voted to approve, okay. All right, thank you, you have your approval.
Thank you so much, have a wonderful day.
Okay, number forty-two, One-Forty-Five Chaplain Crescent. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property in a five residential lots. We have before us materials submitted by the applicant and correspondence from engineering, ravine and natural feature protection, and right-of-way control center, Bell Canada. Okay, so, you are not Michael Goldberg?
I'm not Michael Goldberg, I'm on vacation. I'm Michelle Charco, I'm a land use planner, I work with Michael.
Yes.
So, I was gonna make a very brief presentation and...
We understand this is merely technical, because everything's essentially been approved, and this is...
It's under construction right now, and so basically, we can't go by way of part lot control because a portion of the site is not within a plan of subdivision, so planning staff have advised us that we have to go by way of consent to sever.
Yeah, okay. So, does anybody have any questions, or do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Motion to approve the application. Not second that.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Have your approval. Number forty-four, Eight Belfair Avenue. Oh, the regular conditions.
They're attached to all...
Yeah, yeah, she knows about it. All right, the purpose of this application is to construct a three-story detached dwelling with a rear basement, walkout, a front yard, parking pad, and rear first, second, and third-story decks. And we have before us on this application, material submitted by the applicant, staff reports from urban forestry, two staff reports from urban forestry, and opposition from Fourteen Belfair Avenue. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon, my name's David Lying, I'm the agent for the application. Unfortunately, at the last minute, the owner could not make it here today.
Do we have any questions, or do we need a presentation?
The original one, yes. Sorry, I didn't, I don't think there's a recent report, is there?
Forty-four.
I believe just urban forestry had a letter on file. There was a letter this morning of support from the neighbor to the north, the letter, the neighbor, Fourteen Belfair, I was emailing back and forth with, they had some questions about some stuff, unfortunately, they couldn't make it here today either.
Okay, so, are there, are there any reports?
Yeah.
Oh, here.
So, it was originally a two-story home with an integrated garage at grade. The neighbors had some concerns about the character of the neighborhood, they didn't like the integrated garage, so when we met them at the original hearing, they agreed that if we eliminated the garage and just proposed a front yard parking pad like many other homes on the street, they would be okay with the proposal, so that's what we've done, except, on the original proposal, if you can imagine, if you have an integrated garage, the building ends up being quite tall because the flush floor is essentially over the garage, so the overall building envelope was maintained in sort of a massing respect, but we brought that flush floor down to grade level, and they were okay if we maintained that massing on the third floor, so that we took that space back as third floor, and then stepped in the rear of the building to mitigate any massing on the back of the building. So, essentially, it's sort of the same sized building, except now it's three stories because the first floor is no longer the integrated garage, which was the main sticking point with the neighbors. We met with them last week, and they were, they were happy with what we had proposed to them. The neighbor to the north has submitted a letter of support this morning, well, a letter of non-objection. The neighbor to the south had no objections, I thought they'd be here today, but I guess they decided not to come.
Nobody's here contesting it.
There was other concerns, like the thing at the, the deck at the back was gonna be very high, because the first floor was high, the neighbor to the north had concerns about that, so when we lowered the first floor, now the deck is more closer to grade, they were happy with that.
And you now propose to have path parking in the front or street parking?
It's a parking pad on the front. The, the main challenge, maybe I'll show you a picture here. So, that's the driveway to the left, that white car actually is parked on the driveway for Eight Belfair, which is the white house. On the survey, the property line is actually running right down the middle of that driveway, so that driveway is technically on the neighbor's property, so if the neighbor to the south ever rebuilt their house or did a renovation, it would sort of take away all of the parking at Eight Belfair. So, to do any work on the house, whether it's a renovation or new home, we essentially have to move the driveway north, which is what led us to the original proposal, which was the integrated garage, so that we had parking inside a garage as well as a driveway, which I guess could have been used as a second parking spot. But after long discussions with the neighbors, they didn't like that, so they wanted us to have just a front yard parking pad, which is very common on the street. This is, if you turn around and look on the other side of the street, this is what's across the street, it's the same sort of style as what we're proposing, it's a three-story home, front yard parking right in front of it, and the main walls go up the side, you can see the house way off to the left, the main wall height goes right up to the top. That's essentially what we're proposing for Eight Belfair. But we need the front yard parking variance because I guess they felt, the zoning examiner felt that there was originally parking, but in fact, there is no parking, because if you look at the survey, that property line goes right up the middle of the existing
Don't you have a right-of-way over the neighbor?
No, I can show you. I thought the same thing, I thought the same thing when we got the survey, so on the left there, you can see the property line is going, well, it's not right in the middle, but it's off to the side, and the curb cut down at the street can't stay there, so if we put the driveway more onto the property in front of Eight Belfair, we essentially are kind of eliminating the parking, street parking that's in front of the house, so by moving everything north, we're in fact moving that street parking spot to the south. I'm not sure if that makes much sense.
Move the house north and the parking spot south?
Actually, I have another sketch here, show you. That's the existing curb cut that goes up the driveway, but as you can see, it's right in front of the property line, so we can't leave it there. So, technically, the way this was originally built, regardless of what we do, we can't leave that there, we have to, we have to move it over here. So, what we've done is we've moved it far enough so that the new curb will be longer to accommodate two cars rather than one. This is the existing curb in front of Six Belfair, which is already too long for one car, but by converting this existing curb cut into more curb, we're basically creating two parking spots. So, the parking spot that was in front of Eight Belfair is now moving over here, so there's gonna be two spots over here, and it's all because our current driveway is overlapping onto the neighbor's property, and regardless of what we do, whether it's a renovation or new home, we have to move everything north. It's kind of, we're trying to fix a problem that we didn't really have a choice on.
This is a new house, correct?
Yes.
I note that the city has a mature maple on the boulevard. Did you give any thought to the placement of the parking pad and the curb cut in order to try and maintain that? Because I noticed in their memo, they had some concerns about that.
They did, I, and I've been trying to get ahold of them to explain to them that because we have to move the parking pad slash driveway to the north, that it's, that tree just unfortunately is right where the driveway needs to go, and we've got the driveway at the minimum, and we, we can't move the driveway any further south because then we're eliminating street parking that we're trying to save. To answer your question, we thought about it, but at the end of the day, there's really nothing we can do about having to have the tree removed.
So, you haven't had any response from them, you haven't had any dialogue?
There were two gentlemen, both the gentleman's names are on the reports, I've tried contacting both of them, neither of them would get back to me.
Just a very quick question, you can still build this new house, develop the parking, then you can save the tree, am I right?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
You can still build this house, develop the parking, and keep the tree.
And just have...
That would be a second, that would be a different arrangements for removing the parking. But I don't know, let's just say from, really, you know...
So, not park, not park the car, no parking on the property at all?
Yeah, I'm just asking, if that's the way to save, is that the only way to save the tree?
The only way to save the tree would be to have, completely eliminate any driveway or parking on the property.
And you can still go to the house, but then you lost the lot?
Then they have, yeah, they have no parking.
Is parking on, is parking permitted on the street? Are there permits, or what?
I'm not sure if there are permits, it's definitely street parking. Everyone on the street has front yard, permitted front yard parking pads, some of them project over the property lines. I don't know if people have dedicated street parking permits, but the, the parking spot that's currently right in front of the house, where that car is, by correcting the driveway, we by default have to eliminate that parking spot. That whole driveway has to move north, whether it's a parking pad or a driveway. We, the owner, it's, the thing with the tree was unfortunate, it was not our intention at all, but when we started going through the planning process, it, we just kept coming round, back around to the same problem, that the tree ultimately would have to be removed in order to correct a situation that was wrong from the very beginning.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Well, we have a, a report here from urban forestry.
That's what I was trying to, I wanted to communicate that to the forestry people, but I never really got a chance. My understanding is that we still need to go and go through an application with them.
That's why I'm wondering, I don't know if we see it. Should there's a chance that we approve you, or you don't got the approval of cutting the tree?
I, to be honest with you, I've never really understood how the procedures work that way.
It does say that here, that they can deny regardless of committee of adjustment approval.
I, I guess, I guess if that's the way it's...
Just we can allow you to park it, but we not allow you to cut the tree, we need them to approve it, so I think that's, you know, it's like a little circle. I mean, I'm calling to keep the tree, but allow it to develop, so...
Yeah, the owner would essentially lose the parking that they had to save the tree, I guess, is what you're asking?
So, yes, I'm just putting it loud, so I'm going to make a motion, I will accept all the variances except, I'm stating not to remove the tree, to make any doubt about the owner.
And not, you can't, you can't...
I go back and... If you say no parking, then you come back, I'll allow you to, you want, you want to cut it off?
They already asked that. The zoning examiner, the way they described it to me was that it had to be worded that there would be no parking in front, and it would be zero parking. But we've specifically put in the application that the intention was to park there.
What happens to your neighbor, because although most of that property in the current driveway is your client's, there's still a small portion, is he, would he consent to the curb cut being replaced, or?
They, yes, no, they, they were aware that essentially that curb on the left there, that would all be extended north, almost to where the bumper of the car is now.
Yeah.
So, that whole parking spot is moving south. This was, this was their main concern when we met with them, was that that parking spot would not be lost, which is why we were explaining to them that the whole curb cut in the ramp there, in the sidewalk, was being located in such a way that no street parking was going to be lost, and then, one of the neighbors from way up the street came down, they had been meeting with the counselor who had no objection to it, they actually supported a couple of applications in the area where front yard parking had been approved, because they were concerned also about the street parking, so this was sort of the main point that we had to get around.
There's no way they can change the variance.
Well, no, the variance would have to change, that no parking would be provided on the site, which changes the variance, which sounds like the neighbors, somebody might be upset about that.
Yeah, no, I, there was a lot of back and forth with the neighbors about the, about the street parking. And again, they were, everyone that we talked to on the street, that we met with, understood that what we were trying to do was in the best interest of parking on the street.
Or do you want to report to the board? And it's like, what happens if you get... ...percent of the... Rather than drive three, the other one is...
There's no way you can...
It's already been deferred on.
The, the planning department originally, I don't know if there's a record of this, but they originally were objecting to the integrated garage. So what we're proposing now, although it may not be worded in past reports, this is actually what the planning department wanted originally. We, we started with the integrated garage, and they were, they were basically okay with it, because there are also some integrated garages on the street. And I don't think that they have submitted a report now objecting, because I think we're now sort of back where the planning department originally wanted us to propose, much like the house across the street.
Don't you have the same problem with the curb cut? And where are you locating the curb cut?
It was, on both applications, it was the same problem. It both, they both had to be moved north, and the neighbors were concerned that we were going to be sacrificing parking. So on both applications, that parking spot was being moved south.
Okay. So, all right. Any further questions, or do we have a motion?
I was just going to ask, the original plan with the integrated garage, presumably that would have also meant a removal of the tree?
They both, yeah.
Either way, it would have been...
It was, yeah, we've, we looked at it several times. It was sort of like, the driveway has to go right there. It's kind of, it's really unfortunate. It's, I think when the owner bought the house, they didn't realize that that driveway is not even on their property. It wasn't until we got the survey done, and then it just became a very frustrating problem, because they wanted to propose the work, and the whole time, everything just kept falling right where that tree was. And then it was a bit of a tug of war between the street parking, access to the property, and the tree. So it's sort of, the owner wants to maintain parking like they thought they had, the neighbors don't want to lose street parking, so we're proposing to move it north or move it south. And under either solution we came up with, the tree was always in the way. If it was just like, maybe another couple feet that way?
So we can technically approve it subject to forest reapproval, moving that tree. And if you don't approve, you can come back and ask for variance.
If you could ever get subject to urban forestry, yeah, condition number one. And if it doesn't work out, then we would have to come back with that.
Giving the tree, I think that would be the best solution for you, and also for us to maintain the integrity of the...
Right, so I, from what I understand, you're just going to just apply the condition from urban forestry, which we would go in, that, I think I understood that from the beginning.
So urban forestry condition number one.
Yeah.
Because that's related to protecting trees.
So, they have to decide. All right. So do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve your application. Subject...
Sorry. I haven't, sorry. Motion to approve your application subject to a forestry recommendation.
Forestry condition number one.
Number one.
Okay. Do we have a second, or?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Good luck to you, though.
Can I just ask one question? I'm not sure in the wording there, someone, I think, mentioned it about possibly tying to the plan. I don't think that was a condition you just added. It was just the forestry thing? Okay. Yes, right. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
You might want some more flexibility. Okay. Now, we go back to forty-three. Forty-three here? Yes. Yes. Okay. Purpose of this application is to construct a complete second story and partial third story addition to the rear portion of the building, a one-story artist live-work studio, which is connected to the main three-story dwelling via a one-story connection hall. And before us, we have material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning, a letter requesting approval from the councillor, eighteen form letters in support, and one form, one letter in opposition from twenty-four Grange Avenue. Yes, sir?
I'll just make one correction. The description has changed somewhat. The, I'll get into it in my presentation. The connection...
You're saying the purpose has changed?
Yeah, the, if that's relevant to you.
We better find out what it is now, because that's very important.
It doesn't impact any of the, the variants we're...
Still, it's important to get the purpose right.
Right. The connection between the front and rear portions of the building has been removed based on, the modification was, was, was made in order to address the concerns of the neighbor at twenty-four Grange.
Okay, so the wording, which is connected to the main three-story dwelling, et cetera, is out?
Is, the description says a, a one-story connection?
Yeah.
So there's no... My understanding, Leah, is that one-story connection...
There's an existing one-story connection between the front and the back.
There was going to be a second-story connection.
There was going to be a second-story connection, but we removed it in light of speaking with the neighbor at twenty-four Grange.
Okay, let me read you the purpose, and you tell me what, because I'm not 100% clear as to what has to be deleted. It reads, "To construct a complete second story and partial third story addition to the rear portion of the building, a one-story artist live-work studio." And, and then it says, and I thought that the rest of it's deleted, "which is connected to the main three-story dwelling via a one-story connection hall."
Let me just, this might clear it up. Oh, no, sorry. What we have here is, the original proposal was to have this second-story connection between the front, where am I here? The, the, the front and the rear portions of the building. That has been now removed in the, in the, so it's now only, we're just maintaining the, the first floor connection between the front and rear portions of the building. I'm not sure if the description is worded well in the first place.
Yeah. And you were saying that this is, that connection is existing?
The first floor connection, the first floor connection is existing?
All right.
But that blue part has been removed to address concerns from the neighbor.
That's why you said there's no more additional linkage proposed.
Sorry?
Well, you were saying that there's no more connection new extent?
That's right. There's no additional connection proposed. That's been removed.
That's an ex, so there's, it's just exterior connection now?
Now there's an interior connection on the first floor of the building. We're not adding a second floor connection between the front and rear portions of the building. The blue portion of the building has been removed.
Down below there.
That's right. That, on the ground floor of the existing, you see, you see where it says after modification? So that once, the first story connection is going to remain.
So it says, "to construct a complete second story addition."
It's on, it's on the plans that are in...
But it was described in the notice, two-story connection hall.
It, it might, they might have meant, whoever wrote it, might have meant an additional, you know, an additional...
They described it as being a two-story connection hall, as one story addition. Does it impact any of the variances by removing that second floor?
It makes the FSI variance go, decrease.
I mean, I think the purpose is fine.
Yeah. Just to double verify, that existing connection is shown in the survey as one-story aluminum clad.
That's correct.
So where are you doing a second story addition?
On the rear portion of the building. So there's an existing one-story building at the rear of the property? Let me, perhaps the sight plane is better?
Yeah, that's good. The left side.
So we're doing a, 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 a one and a half, not even, a one-story addition with a rooftop, elevator, and stair enclosure on the rear portion of the building.
So when the purpose is described as a complete second story?
Right, so the first...
Taking out that connection portion seems to me it's no longer a complete second story.
No, no, sorry. Let, let me explain.
Addition of second floor.
This is the existing first floor connection between the front and rear buildings.
Yes.
We were planning to have a second story connection as well. That's been removed. But we haven't modified the full second floor addition on the existing rear building. And we're also proposing a rooftop, elevator, and stair enclosure on the roof of this new second floor.
Okay.
Is that more clear now?
Yeah. All right.
Okay, I'll start off. I'm Andrew Dales of one forty-seven Liberty Street in Toronto. I'm the planning consultant for Mr. Charles Pactor, the owner of twenty-two Grange, which is located in Chinatown. The proposal is to add, again, a second story addition and a rooftop stair and elevator enclosure to the rear section of this L-shaped building. The rear building was originally built as a funeral home and has, had several non-residential uses in it over the years. The front building was added in two thousand and three, creating a single L-shaped building on the property. This live-work building is used as the owner's residence and art studio, and I was informed a little bit earlier that, yeah, of one of my client's pieces of art on the wall in, in this room. We worked hard over many months to address comments from community planning, and they now support the variances. We are satisfied with the community planning condition, that the approval should be tied to the drawings. We have satisfied the comments in the report from Transportation Services. We have received eighteen letters of support from neighbors, as you identified. The ward councillor has also submitted a letter expressing his support for the variances. The first hearing on this matter was deferred after we learned that the neighbor at twenty-four Grange has, had concerns with the proposal, which was related to views from their rear yard. After the deferral hearing, as we've discussed, we made a major modification to the plans by removing the eight-point-one-meter-long second-floor connection between the front and rear portions of the building. This reduced the FSI and improved views and a sense of open space in the rear yard of twenty-four Grange. So the circulation, of course, by removing that section of building will be impacted negatively, but it's a reasonable modification considering the, the concerns expressed by the neighbor.
So does that, I think you talked about this, does that change variance number two, floor space index?
Went from one-point-seven-four to one-point-six-eight, times the lot area.
It's already been changed.
Yeah, we, we had the zoning notice revised after, after we, we, we modified the plans.
Okay. So have, you spoke to the, but, but your neighbor is, from twenty-four, is still here objecting?
So, I'll, I'll get there in, in a moment.
Can, before you do, can I just ask, Mr. Young? Could you come forward, sit in this row here? So we, we know you're there. Okay, go ahead, Mr..
Okay, so, so only two variances remain. We've made, again, many modifications over many, many months with community planning, and we have two remaining variances. We were able to kind of cut them down as we went through the process. The other, as for height of either the front and rear main walls or the side main walls, which would extend to a height of eleven-point-six meters where nine-point-five meters is permitted. Setbacks and, setback in building height variances are not, overall building height variances are not required for this proposal. Despite the new, sorry, despite the major modification we made, understand that the owner of twenty-four Grange is now requesting that we set the south wall of the second story addition back by fifteen feet or four-point-six meters. So two, two points there. First, the wall height variance does not apply to the walls of the second story, which are below the nine-point-five-meter wall height limit. The height, this height, the height of that wall is as of right. The wall height variance applies to the rooftop stair and elevator enclosure, which is set back by that south wall by over eight meters. It's likely won't even be visible from the rear yard of twenty-four Grange. Second, the setback of, of this wall is also as of right. Under the current zoning, new walls are allowed to match the setback of existing walls, which in this case has a zero lot line condition. Again, there's no height or setback variance required to build a proposed south wall. I, I'm, I'm concerned that there might be a misreading of the plans as well, which we provided to them when we made the modification. Their letter states that the, that south wall will have a height of twenty-nine feet from the ground, while the plans indicate that the wall will be twenty-two feet high. Additionally, they submitted a letter, the, one of the illustrations in the letter does not account for the removal of that second story connection, which is a major change that we made to address their concerns. So in terms of the four tests, the proposed variances maintain the intent and purpose of the built forum policies in section three of the OP, and the infill policies for development on properties that vary from, that differ from the prevailing lot pattern. These policies require that development respect the massing scale and setbacks of neighboring properties while taking into account existing conditions. Also, adequate privacy, sunlight, and sky views must be maintained. The removal of the second-floor connection will allow for adequate sky views and sunlight. There are no shadow impacts from the proposed addition on neighboring properties, and we've confirmed this through a shadow study. Privacy is being maintained by locating main windows appropriately and by screening outdoor areas with fencing. The general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw are also maintained. Maximum FSI's are intended to prevent overdevelopment and undesirable impacts on neighboring properties. In this case, the additional floor space has been deployed in a way that does not create unreasonable impacts on neighboring properties in terms of shadows, privacy, and access to sunlight. And finally, the proposed FSI and wall height variances are minor in that neighboring properties, in our opinion, will not be unduly impacted. Thank you.
Mr. Dales, I, I just want to be sure, with respect to variance number one, my notes are, my sheet says that the height is, will be twelve meters. I thought you said eleven, so...
It's eleven-point-six. We had the, the zoning notice was corrected just the other day by the zoning examiner. I'm not sure where she got the twelve meters from, but it's eleven-point-six. So the variance is just, is decreasing. I don't think that would require any new notice.
No.
But we only need, so, in other words, we only need a variance of eleven-point-six, not twelve.
Okay.
And again, that, that variance only applies to the...
Yeah.
I think it's eleven-point-six-one, just to be safe. You, you know, there's, that's a rounding issue, but the examiner wrote eleven-point-six, and I think it's eleven-point-six-one or something, so it's, yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Dales, or can we hear from the neighbor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Young, please.
Yes, I'm Wilson Young, and I represent the Pooni Society, and we are the neighbor on twenty-four Grange. And we're concerned...
Sir, can I understand what the use of your building is? Is, is, do people live there?
Yes, we have some tenants there, but it's primarily used as a, it's a society for people from a certain part of China, that we meet there, and they have their games, and they chat, and stuff like that. So it's, it's used during the day.
Okay.
And we've been there since nineteen sixty-eight.
Right.
So, yeah, we are opposed to the requested variance, the first one being the height you just talked about, where the, the standard is nine-point-five-meter tall, and now it's being increased to twelve meter. So we think that additional two-and-a-half meter is significant. But more importantly, the second item, the second variance, which is allowing an increase in the space, floor space index, FSI, which the bylaw allows one-point-zero to one-point-six-eight. That's a big difference. That's like a sixty, sixty-eight percent. But we are concerned because we're looking at from the impact. The numbers by themselves, you know, we can't figure it, it's abstract. It's what the impact is on, on our use of the property. So, if I can just put this...
Okay, you have that. That's fine.
So that's the same thing. Our concern is primarily with the massing of the second, number twenty-four is the Pooni Society, and number twenty-two is the applicant. And the first thing we note is that the, the lot at twenty-two is L-shaped, so it goes around and has a part of the butts to the Pooni Society. I was told, and I can confirm this, but many, many years ago, that part of the back part of the lot did belong to Pooni, but the owner, well before Pooni Society bought it, severed the lot, and that's why we don't have that portion. But because of the way the lot is shaped, L-shaped, we share a, a common sideline as well as a rear property line. And right now... I was told, and I can confirm this, but many, many years ago, that part of the back part of the lot did belong to Pooni, but the owner, well before Pooni Society bought it, severed the lot, and that's why we don't have that portion. But because of the way the lot is shaped, L-shaped, we share a common sideline as well as a rear property line. And right now, the Pooni building is only 15 feet away from that property line. And the existing building is built right at the property line, there is no setback. And it's a one-story building right now, that's the existing structure, and that building covers the whole rear lot. You can see from that thing pretty well, the whole lot, there's, there's no extra. And right now, there's a wall that we see that's about 12 feet tall. Now, with the addition, it's going to go up to, as Mr. Dale says, like 22 feet, okay? The third, the third story part, which is the pop-up for the elevator, is not a concern for us because it's at the back, so it won't affect our view. But when that, when the, if the proposal goes through, is approved, we will see a bigger, a taller wall right up against our property line, which is only 15 feet away. Right now, we see 12 feet. And so we were saying, we were concerned because it, our view from the back will essentially be blocked, because from the street looking north, as well as looking northeast, they will all be blocked. We can only look out to the west in that little narrow part there, because it is, it is a tall building, and it's just one plane, just a massive... So that's our big concern, is that the massing of the building, second story, right at the property line, so close to our property, affects our usage, our adversity affects our usage. So we are concerned with the impact, and as a result, we think that the committee should at least look at mitigating that massing by perhaps requesting the applicant to do some kind of setback on the second, second floor. On the portion that borders a butt to Pooni property, okay, we, on his side of the property, you know, it's not a concern, but, so that's where, that's our concern. And we know that this situation is, I believe, unusual, because most lots are rectangular, and they're side by side, but this one is, is L-shaped and wraps around and a butt to our property. So, so our view from the back will be...
Mr. Young?
Yes.
I need some help here.
Yes.
So this is, this is 22, this whole thing plus this.
Right, correct.
And is this your property? And if so, what's this?
No, no, the property includes the white, the white portion.
So this is, this is your building?
Yeah, that's the building.
So you say this is 15 feet?
This is 15 feet from there, right.
And you now have 12 feet high?
A 12 feet high concrete wall, right there.
And it's going up?
Up to 22 feet.
Okay, so what do you do in here?
We have a garden shed, a shed that we put some garden tools, where the person does a bit of gardening at the fronts and at the back. So it's just, it's just a...
How is this, you say you're going to look at this wall, but how does it impact your activities or your view or anything?
Well, well, right now, because it's only 12 feet, we can still see above 12 feet, like when we're there. But if it goes higher, when you stand on the ground, you really have to look high up, and you won't see any, you'll be looking at the sky.
So what do you have here? Do you have windows here? Looking up?
Yes, there are some windows at the back of the house, correct.
So what use do you have of this area here? What do you do in that area there?
Oh, there are bedrooms there, on the second floor. Bedrooms, uh...
But you're complaining, I took it that it's the Pooni Society that are complaining about this wall being high.
Right, right.
So you're on the first floor here?
Yes.
These are your meeting rooms?
Yes.
Okay, so you're looking at, you're now looking at a 12-foot-high wall?
Correct.
So, and now it's going to be 22 feet or something?
Correct.
Okay, so you say you can see out over that?
Well, you have to look up to the sky.
12 feet?
Yeah. But just straight up to the sky.
Okay, are you worried about, are you, are you talking about the view from the first floor or the view from the second floor?
Both, but more importantly, from the first floor. Because we see this wall, and it gives you the sense that, completely boxed in on both sides, because we also have the, the side of the house, that's already, it's already up to that, yes, that's also boxed, that's also a wall that's in that range.
What about the property next to that? Is that this one? Is that two stories?
Uh, no, that's, I believe that's, it's just a park, just garage at the back, it's just a garage, a one-story, one-story storage garage, I think.
Property, you keep going for a couple more feet on that side, right?
Yeah. Yep.
That's going to improve your view?
Improve the view, and also the airflow, and the, you would not, we would not feel as if we're boxed in, because right now would be one, under the proposal, be just one vertical wall, one plane.
So have, I take it you would probably discuss this with...
Yes, yes, we had a meeting with them in June, and yes, we did raise that as a concern.
So how far would you think you have to step back to the second story?
Well, we suggested 15 feet, but that's just by talking to a number of people that I know in the industry, but it would be up to the committee to determine, because, because we feel that the impact of the variance number two is that with such a high floor space density, 1.68, that's very high. And part of the reason is because the, the building uses the whole piece of land, and is built right to the property line. So that's one of the reasons why the, why the FSI is as big as it is. And we estimate, like, just, I did, as the architect that we were looking at, using, he said if it was back about 15 feet, that FSI would be dropping to about 1.6. So just a little, just slight reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Young? Alright, Mr. Dales?
Thank you. I'm going to let Mr. Pactor come up and respond as well. I'll just say that if we were to set the north wall of the second floor addition back to reduce the density very, you know, significantly, that south wall would still be able to be built in the exact same location. There is no height variance required for that south wall, and there is no setback variance required for that south wall as well. So if we were to massively reduce the FSI, we could still build that wall to that height in that location. I'll just let Mr. Pactor.
Just one question. Thank you for letting me say a few words. I'm the owner of 22 Grange. I've lived in the neighbourhood for 41 years, and I did not put this up specifically, but that's my piece of art on the wall right here, done in 1972. Yes.
Pactor, I've been told I'm not to allow a second person to speak to rebuttal, but...
As the owner, I'm not allowed to say anything?
It's not that you're not allowed, it's that the, if there's one person speaking, the one person who presented should be the person to do the rebuttal. Otherwise, if there's new information presented, then the opposition would have an opportunity to speak again.
I can't speak?
So, Mr. Pactor, you, you can speak, but only to rebuttal?
Okay, I'd be happy to do a rebuttal.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be as generous as I can. The Pooni Society is also a non-conforming use. My building, which is, has won six awards for design and architecture, was designed by Stephen Topley. I renovated the space in 1998. I've had over 200 events here, and it is one of the best-known landmarks in the Grange neighbourhood. There will be no loss of sunlight in the rear yard of 24 Grange, as the new building is on the north side of the property. And I'm quite prepared to work with 24 Grange to help them design a beautiful back wall. I might even do a mural of a moose jumping off a cliff on that high wall. But the point being, their garden is not being used, I have seen it many times, it's in disrepair. I'm sitting next to a building that really needs a lot of work done to it, mine is a showplace. The request from 24 Grange for me to remove 15 feet from the second story of the new building towards the north compromises the architect's design and is structurally far more costly. We already removed a proposed third-story bridge between the front and back buildings at 22 Grange because they had objected to it. The construction of the new building will add greatly to the value of their existing property. I also believe it will encourage future development in what is currently a rundown lane behind Dundas Street. I've spent my entire life trying to restore properties in the Grange. I did 50 Beverley, 80 Beverley looking out over Grange Park, I did 2 Grange Place, 4 Sullivan, 78 Sullivan. I've renovated 16 properties in the neighbourhood. I am now 76 years old, and this is my swan song. This is the building that I want to be my legacy. And I'm happy to work with 24 Grange to help them upgrade their property. It needs work. It has been neglected, it's an eyesore on the street. I've also had to live with their people sitting out on the porch every day in the summer, speaking very, very loudly. It's a very strange use of a building, and somehow or other, they got permission to do it as a non-conforming use. Mine is a home and studio of a prominent Canadian artist and a gallery, which will help to enhance the neighbourhood and maybe be a harbinger of what's to come. This is the great plan, and I want to work with them, and I'm not their enemy, we're neighbours, and we have to do stuff that's going to work well for both of us.
Pactor, that was here, this was here before, it was deferred presumably for you and Mr. Dales to talk to Mr. Young and his...
Yes, well, you've given us that opportunity, so here we are. You've given us the opportunity to speak, so there we are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We did meet with, um...
Alright, alright, we, we have enough people speaking, thank you.
After the first deferral, the, sorry, okay.
Yeah, add rebuttal, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so you have any further questions, or are we ready for a motion?
Just a question for you. So I understand the intent, the design intent for the...
Sorry, I'm...
Sorry. I said, I understand the design intent of the rear part of the building, and therefore that floor space index is more like a byproduct of your design, and this is the size that you need to achieve to get that mass and the shape and the proportion relative to the front building, how you're going to relate it back. But the numbers are still 1.68, and it was 1.75, did you say?
1.74.
1.74, so you...
And that reduction, again, was based on the elimination of that, which we believe is the, is, was the change that allowed us to have the biggest improvement to the plan for the neighbour at 24 Grange. We, I don't believe that, that by setting that second floor back, it's going to really have much of a difference there, really, at all. It was, the big change we could make for them was to open the view up to the east and to the northeast, and so, you know, we weren't hap, my client was not happy to agree to that change. It really kind of reduces the circulation, the ability to get between the front building and the rear building on the second floor, you've got to go downstairs, and it's, it's the circulation is not nearly as good. So we tried to, but we tried to pick the modification that we could, that we could do in order to kind of have the maximum benefit for 24 Grange.
I have a question about the layout of the house and the use. When I looked at the floor plans, I didn't, I didn't see sort of, I saw lots of live area, but I didn't see a lot of work area identified at least on the plans. So was the purpose of the back, new back unit, to provide some sort of...
It's mixed. It's, my understanding is it's mixed throughout, there's studio space, there's living space, bedrooms, you know, areas for painting, office space as well. So it's, you know, it's an interesting kind of mixed, you know, just based on what, what Mr. Pactor's needs are, just in terms of, you know, office, studio, living space, and they've laid out...
The two areas aren't divided up?
No.
Into live-work in...
No, the, the whole property has a live-work permission.
So Mr. Young has said the existing property is 12 feet high, and is it going to something in the range of 22?
22. It's 11-foot-high wall existing, and it's going to 22, but again, that, that, that height there is, we don't need a variance for that wall height in that location.
That's as of right?
It is.
Yeah, you don't have a variance for it, right?
No, we have a variance for the sidewall height, but that, that variance applies to only the rooftop elevator and stair enclosure, which is, it's, it's, it's at the north end of the property, it's not going to be anywhere near 24 Grange, it's not going to even be visible. That rooftop elevator and stair enclosure is, is up against the north wall of the property.
Okay, so tell me about the floor space index.
Yes.
Is that mostly the increase? What is it now? What's it existing?
Existing is the building fronting Grange and a one-story building at the rear. The increase is the, the full second floor, the, covering the entire footprint, the, the whole second floor of the rear building, plus there is GFA in the rooftop, even though there's no living space up there, there's, it's still counted for GFA. So the rooftop stair and elevator enclosure is counted in GFA as well. If that was eliminated from the plan, it would be, you know, the, the GFA would be down probably somewhere around 1.4, 1. something like that.
Okay, so what is the second floor? How does, how does that figure in the floor space index?
The second floor, I'm sure we have, no, no, in terms of the number?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we have, do we have that number here, Leah?
Like how many square metres in the second floor? What is the...
How does it relate to floor space index? We have one point, you're asking for 1.68. You tell me, with the elevator, whatever it is on the roof, you might get down to 1.4. So what does, what does the full second story and the back piece, what does that account for?
In other words, the new GFA?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, oh, so that's, okay, I've got, yeah, hold on.
I'd also like to add that I have over 15 years of art, I haven't scored.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Pactor, yeah.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got that number for you here. So there's an existing, if I, you just give me a moment to just find it. There's a, well, we have it on the front page of the plans. So existing on the property right now is 445 square metres, which is about one, well, if you get my calculator, what is 445 divided by 401? So we have 1.1, so we have 401, oh, sorry, 4, I'm sorry. We have 404, 445 square metres of existing GFA, which is 1.11.
Right.
And, and do you have the GFA of the third floor, the, the elevator and enclosure?
I haven't got it calculated.
No, we don't have that calculated, but, so we have 1.11, we're asking for 1.68, which includes the portion of the building that's going to be nowhere near 24 Grange, and so we, so we don't have the GFA of that third floor?
Do you mind putting a second floor plan on the screen?
Sorry? Oh, sure.
A11, drawing A11.
Yep.
Because there is some dimensions on it, and we can take a look, and also...
Yeah, oh, yeah, so we have the dimensions of it.
Right.
Well, to get the dimensions of the, of the rooftop elevator enclosure, we'll need the third floor, we'll need the, the rooftop plan.
Mm-hmm.
There it is.
Just in the top, top right-hand corner?
Top right-hand corner.
So, what does that account for in terms of floor space index?
It's 8.96 meters by 5.02 meters.
So, 45 square meter.
The opening of the stair and the elevator.
So, that, which is not included in the GFA?
Which is not included in the GFA.
So, is there a way for you to kind of...
Yeah.
Just give us the section, just do the calculation.
Can you go back to the second floor, please?
Sure.
So, while she's doing the calculation, I just want to ask you something about the layout of the second floor.
Sure.
So, you have a bedroom, and you have a divider. So, I understand that the building code requested every bedroom will have a window, and that's why that is not a legal bedroom at the corner, because you can't have window facing your neighbor, right? And then you put a divider here, hoping that you will pass the code, and then, and that's the reason why we have some doubts about how, how is it going to be a work lift? It's more like an Airbnb to me. I know this is not your intent, but the way that you lay out, you're having two...
I'm not sure where Airbnb comes in. This is my client's studio and residence.
And one single master bedroom. How do you explain that?
Explain, sorry?
Two washrooms and one master bedroom.
Well, one of the washrooms is for the public space.
I need her name.
The dining room, so the washroom that you see...
Or she should be speaking from the...
The smaller washroom, sorry.
I think the architect is probably better to explain the, the layout.
So, we need her name.
Leah Maston, M-A-S-T-O-N.
Because you can see this whole area, and that's exactly what the neighbor is complaining about this.
Hello, I'm going to explain the bathroom layout of the second floor. So, the bathroom you see above is the bathroom that's servicing the kitchen, dining room, and living area, and the bathroom you see directly below that is the master bathroom, and that's a master bedroom. And yes, there is a sliding partition, but it's just one bedroom. It's really not intended for Airbnb. That is the last thing that this project is about.
Okay, so Mr. Dale's, do we have the, so is that 1.68 less 1.11? Is that all second-story the difference?
Yeah, so just the GFA of that third floor? You're looking for ballpark, it's not going to be down to two decimal places. So, let's just take it with the elevator, with the stair, just the buildable.
It's 46 square meters, but mine needs to be...
Yeah, so four, so, okay, let's just do our gross basis. So, it's 46 square meters?
46 square meters minus the opening.
So, it's 46 square meters minus the openings that, which are exclusions from GFA, and those aren't deducted, so it would be 445. The new GFA would be the 445 minus the 46. Sorry, the 6, the 674 minus the 46. The new GFA, can you just subtract that 674 from 445?
Yeah.
Yeah?
674 minus 445.
445.
Okay.
229 is the new GFA, minus the, the GFA on the, in the rooftop, which is 40, 46, you said? So, 229 minus 46.
Mm-hmm.
229 minus 46. 183.
183 meters. How does that translate into floor space index?
So, the...
So, that's all second floor, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
So, the 401, Leah?
Yeah.
Plus the 183?
Yeah.
Divided by 401?
584.
The, 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 so it's 180, so it's divided by 401?
Okay, yeah. 1.45.
1.45. Well, we have 1.1, 1.1 existing.
Can I ask you another quick question?
Sure.
Before this renovation or expansion, what would be the existing size?
401 square meters. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, that's...
400, sorry.
45.
445 square meters.
145.
Which is 1.1.
Which is 1.1, that's correct.
So, do you benefit from any extra floor space index allowance because you're doing live work, or is it, is it the same, you're allowed the same?
It's the same. It's one times coverage permitted in the area. You know, we're, we're looking at section 4.1.9 of the official plan, which is the standard that I believe is applicable in this, in this case, which is the, which are the policies for new development areas on lots that differ from the, you know, in terms of use, configuration size, the different, from the local pattern, you know, the local lot pattern. And, you know, new development like this, there's certainly many examples of development, you know, being approved in neighborhoods, you know, areas owned for one times coverage that have densities in or around this area.
Okay, we use 1.1 as the starting point, increasing to 1.68. That is still about 50% increase of FSI.
When, so if you, if you focus just on, on that number numerically, that, that'd be accurate. If 1.68, again, includes the portion of the building that's, that's just up against the lane, doesn't have much impact anywhere. So, if, you know, if you look at what I believe is the more important test of the, you know, the more, more important component of the minor test is the impact, and we believe that we've done everything we could to minimize the impact on, you know, including a major modification to, to, to make the situation, you know, much better, in my opinion, for 24 Grange. We also have the, you know, the rest of the adjacent neighbors very much supporting the, the proposed addition, including the neighbor on the other side.
All right. Any further questions? Are we ready for a motion? All right, thank you, Mr. Dale's.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
You're permitted to discuss openly with each other if you would like, but it has to be done openly if you have thoughts.
Go ahead.
In your microphone, so people can hear you. Yep.
Let's hear your thoughts.
I think, to be honest with you, I, I have to say that I like the project. Everything looks great. You can explain the reason for everything that I asked, but the numbers and the size and the massing is pretty huge. That's why we, I think we're all in the same kind of thought, that he has a point that the mass is actually creating an impact on his property, and that's something we really have to address to be fair to him.
It's a big ask.
Okay, there's no...
No, no, we're... Mr. Dale's, we're, we're talking out loud.
Just wanted to be transparent to you, so you know what we're thinking, rather than closing the door and come out and tell you what's going on. So, I would put a motion to, to approve variance number one only, and variance number two, I hope that you can rework it, make it as a nice... I think that would be, is that possible to do that?
Mr. Chair, just, if, if you approve variance number one, the existing building doesn't comply with variance number two. It's already over the permitted GFA.
That's right. So, I have to...
I think if you're going to deal with the proposal, you need to deal with it as it's been presented.
Or you can impose the condition.
Through, through you, it's, you're in committee, and I'm helping them out today because it's their first day.
15 feet.
Well, I think in that case, I will have to, unfortunately, I will have to propose to refuse a proposal, and I hope that when you go to your next stage, you can bring down the number, and hopefully you will be successful.
Are you able to impose a condition of 15 feet as they're asking for, which would reduce the GFA?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Number one, you're in committee. Number two, that was presented earlier, it was not made as a revision. You can't impose that as a condition because it changes the variance.
Brings it down.
It was not made as a condition, or as, as a revision to the proposal. But you're in committee, you have a motion, you either proceed with your motion, or you open a motion to see if you want to listen to more of the application and a possible plan to revise, but then again, you don't have a plan.
Because if we put that condition, he can still appeal, and he has a very strong legal ground to do that.
It changes the GFA, which changes variance.
That's right.
So, you can't grant this variance and then take away from that variance by way of...
Yeah, you know, I wish you have resolved it, but because of these technical issues, I would just have to put a motion to refuse.
Okay, so, we have another, we have another application to be heard. Do you think, Mr. Dale's, Mr. Young, that you could work out a 15-foot setback and give us numbers for the floor space index?
I believe that we can.
Okay, so why don't we hold this down? We'll deal with the next one. Would you have to revise, you have to revise your drawings?
Well, we're not going to be able to do that, certainly here, but we'll, we'll be able to come up with a, a plan that we can put in front of you in, when, when we reconvene. We're not going to be able to, to, to provide, to present to you a set of drawings at this point, of course.
So, three, with, it's not being deferred. They're holding it down for you to go and provide the, and then we can impose a condition saying that the second floor of the rear portion...
Yes.
Be setback 15 meters.
4.6, yeah.
Okay, all right, we're going to hold it down.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is that okay? Yeah, that's even better.
All right. So, number 45, 26 Coates Avenue. Pardon?
You're going to work together right now, and then come back.
And he's going, presumably that...
I'm leaving today, but I have a decision.
Thank you for explaining. It's not my field and work.
It's okay.
Okay, whoops. Purpose of this application is to obtain consent to sever the property to two undersized residential lots. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, staff reports from planning and transportation, a letter from the counselor, a letter from a counselor, not the counselor for this area, I understand, correspondence in support from 12 Coates, one form letter in support, wow, that's 12 Coates as well, opposition from 20, 22, 28 Coates. Yes, your name, sir?
My name is William Holman. I'm here for Jeffrey, Jeffrey Properties.
Yeah.
Okay. This application was previously deferred. The original application was for two detached houses. After consultation with the neighbors and, and in the, and hearing their concerns, we revised the plans to two semi-detached houses, and during this process, we worked with planning to try and come up with a, a plan that they would approve, which they have. I will go through the variances of Unit B to give you an idea of, of the, what we need. The first variance is for setback from a platform. Now, I want to put this here. What you can see here is that it's a cul-de-sac, which comes in and, and circles around, and we're on part of the arc, and what happens with that is, is we have a regular-sized lot that's narrower at the front and bigger, bigger at the back, so in placing the houses on it, we end up with choke points, okay? I can show you the actual plan. The, the lot is narrower at the front and bigger at the back, okay? And this creates the situation where you'll see all through my, my talk, that it creates choke points, and then it widens out. Like, on the rear of Unit B, it's 1.33 meters at the rear, and then there's the two choke points, which we set to 0.7 meters, because that allows people to walk through, and that, right? So, basically, it's, it's the shape of the lot that's creating our, our issues. Okay? Now, that also is for the land, the second variance and the fifth variance, which are landscape open space in the front yard. Well, as, as the property narrows, it cuts down the available land in the front within which to build, to put landscaped open space, both the soft and the front yard landscaped open space. Okay? Now, variance three is lot frontage. Okay. It's hard to determine lot frontages on a, on a curved lot. Okay, the only one I really know is, is, is number 12, which is 6.7 meters. The units 18 and 22 are under 5 meters at the, at the street line, okay? But basically, what I wanted to do is look at the map, and if you see 18, 22, 18 and 20, 22 and 24, it, 20, to have two units in between, 26 and 26A, or however they would be named, just flows with the pattern. And if you look across at 8 and 10, the, it reflects what happens. It's, it's almost identical to what we're choosing, except it's even done with smaller frontages, right? And basically, what I'm saying, the property conforms to the, to the lotting pattern in the neighborhood. Okay, now, variance four and variance nine relate to the rear setback. What happened on that was, originally, when we had our prelim done, it was set at 7.5 meters, and they accepted that. But in the new version, the new prelim, they, they reread the bylaw or something, or whoever reviewed it, and it came out at 7.6, because it has to be 25% of the depth of the lot, and that turns it into 7.6. So, we're, we're off by 0.1 of a meter, and that's only on the first 0.9 meters on the east side of, of B and A, because the lot line on the south angles out, and, and after that point, they comply. Okay? Now, variance six, the parking space in the front yard, transportation planning reviewed it, and they have no issues with it, and with our driveways, et cetera, they have no issue. They have no issues. So I don't see any real issue with that. It's becoming very common in Toronto to do that. It creates a better house. And it creates also the potential to have a better basement that you can use for a rental unit in the future, which is something Toronto needs. Okay? Okay. The height of the front platform is variance number seven. And the request is only for 0.1 meter. And I'd like to, to tell you that the adjacent property to the, to the east, twenty-eight coats, we measured the top of their platform and it's 1.5, over 1.5 meters. So we would match them and it would look the same. The floor space index, well, we, when we did this, we worked with planning. We went with plans. They reviewed the plans and they were, they were willing to accept the, the 1.07 that we're proposing. This lot is a big, underutilized lot. And it makes sense to put two decent houses in this neighborhood. One would be too big. And two decent-sized houses make more sense in the neighborhood. Okay? Also, within about 500 meters, 1.15 was granted in the same zone on Cedric. Okay, variance number seven, nine, the reset back I discussed, that was just a, basically, almost a clerical error. And the side yard setbacks, it's, it's the irregular shape of the lot that creates this. This creates the choke points. Okay? You'll see it all around. If you look at it on that map, almost every house on that circle has a choke point where they're very close to the lot line. Some of them like, well, eight and nine are very close to the lot lines. Fourteen is almost touching the lot line. Sixteen is touching. Eighteen and twenty are very close. Okay? This map is from the Toronto zoning map on, on their webpage. And, and all these lots tend to be close on one side or to the lot line. And they create a choke point and then they widen out afterwards. It's similar to ours. Okay. I'll read from the planning report. The reduced side yard setbacks are located at the closest point to the side lot line and are due in part to the irregular shape of the lot.
Yeah, we're over time, sir.
Okay.
So just wrap up.
Okay, well, in summary, I think that this is worthy of approval. I think it's minor in nature and meets the intent of the official plan. And also meets the provincial and city requirements for intensification on existing infrastructure.
Can we hear from the neighbor now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The applicant?
No.
As the owner?
No, no. We've heard from your representatives, sir. We're going to hear from the neighbor now. You can brief your representative for the rebuttal.
Next round, you can talk to him.
Thank you. Can I start?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tell us your name.
I am Pete Caregorges. I am the neighbor immediately to the east of twenty-six coats at number twenty-eight coats. I have a graphical representation of photo. I also have a very extensive report, submission that I've provided. It's, outlines our response as neighbors. I'm here not only on my behalf. I have authorization in written form within the letters. You'll see from the neighbors at number twenty-two and twenty coats as well. English isn't their first language. Number sixteen coats also submitted an earlier letter of objection. Basically, this proposal is no different than the proposal that was originally presented back in June. The issues that we have here is with respect to the square foot index. What would be, what would happen is you would create two undersized lots, as per the planning department report, with two oversized properties. So the mass and the scale that you would allow would be disproportionate to what we have here. While we do have irregular-shaped lots, you see on Coates Avenue that between each of the properties, there are driveways or mutual driveways that create the image of more space. And so the lot lines are buffered by those, those driveways, which is what we're looking at. Our concerns, basically, as noted in my submission, deal with not just the built form of the final homes, which will be far excessive. They will actually be, my home is the, the first one on the square. And one of the homes will almost be the same size as my home on a substantially smaller footage, lot, lot size. High water table is another issue. We're in a valley within this street. We flood regularly. The old city of York built a retention pond underneath the street because of the fact that we suffer, we have Garrison Creek running through our neighborhood. That needs to be taken into consideration as I've outlined in terms of the official plan as well. While we're not in an officially designated area, when I spoke to staff at the, the Toronto Region Conservation Authority, it may be, if they have funding in the future, an area that's included. There are other developments in the area, neighbors who have, and, and the owner of this property, by his own admission, I have a letter, an email from him where he said earlier in the year that he wasn't going to build basement walkouts because his situation at number twelve coats, and I'll show a photo of that, because of the high water table, created problems for him. So he wasn't going to build a basement walkout. Now he is. Let me get to the other issue. Let me show you number twelve first. So that's a new property that was just built. And you'll see, while this property was approved at the Committee of Adjustment with minimum setbacks, you'll note that it doesn't appear that way because, as I outlined, the driveways that exist between properties. So it gives it the appearance that there is some space between the homes. That won't happen with the development at number twenty-six. I also have six windows facing twenty-six Coates Avenue. This is the setback that currently exists, which is the required setback limit. Maybe a touch smaller by about an inch or two. But overall, you see, I have a bedroom window up top, a living room dining room window on the main floor, and four basement windows. If we were to eliminate or minimize the side yard setback to the requested 70 centimeters, that's going to create, eliminate some sunlight and create more shadows and darkness for those windows. Now, the applicant has also highlighted the fact that there was a property that was approved with a square foot index that was substantially higher. I will show you photos of that property. This is, this is neat because you can actually see situation of a Committee of Adjustment decision and what it looks like today to see, was that in fact the right decision? This is 160 A and B Cedric Avenue that they speak so highly of. If you notice to the left-hand side, the setback is virtually nonexistent, 15 centimeters. How do you access your property? How do you provide maintenance? How do you get up to a roof or deal with maintenance issues if you're the homeowner on others, either one of those sides? On the north side, and again, this property is configured differently than Coates. This is an east-west facing property. Ours are north-south. So the sunlight, this is a daytime photo. There's plenty of sunlight on all the homes from the street here. But you see the setback on the right-hand side, too, virtually nonexistent. So what does that look like when you look at it from a few feet back or a few meters away? Let me provide you with an example of what the mass then looks like and how disproportionate it is. This is what you get now on this street if you're walking north on Cedric. Doesn't fit the neighborhood at all. Ultimately, at the end of the day, and I realize I'm running out of time, but I do have other points to make. At the end of the day, this is what Coates Avenue would likely look like. This is sixty, 160 Cedric Avenue overlaid. And you'll see the roof lines are almost accurate. I have a sloped roof, the top of the roof at twenty-six. So it'll cast a longer shadow, not just on my property, but the remaining properties further to the, to the west. Water is the issue. The loss of a parking space on street that would require a front yard parking permit to be applied for because on our street, we do have street parking by permit. But to get a front yard parking, you need to apply for it because this is the old city of York, which had applications required for front yard parking. Loss of privacy as well with the three-story walkout.
Sir, could you wrap up?
Ultimately, at the end of the day, I have no issue with building a home or two semi-detached homes that are within the square footage index. If that was to happen, and that's been my position all along, we would have two homes with square footage indices at 0.8 of 1,800 square feet and seventeen, over 1,700 square feet, which align with the current homes on Coates Avenue. So my request is that this be reduced. If you reduce the scale, you solve the setback issues. You solve so much footage. The only issues you don't really resolve with regards to the front pad parking and the loss of soft landscaping that will absorb water runoff and rain and snow load. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Farkas, President of Jeffrey Properties. First of all, there will be no water issues because I'm not going deeper than his lot. And if he doesn't have water issues, I, we will not have number one. Number two, that picture is a false picture because we now have combined the setbacks that we have. At one side, we, we have, we go from about two and a half feet to eight feet. And on the other side, on his side, we go up from two, two and a half feet to about three and a half feet. He has four, so there's plenty of space between us. I made, I made a commitment to him, there'll be no windows on, on his side. So the, and he's from the east. So there'll be no privacy issue whatsoever. There's no entrance on the, on that side. So it's total privacy will be maintained 100%. The reason we have the, we added the entrance to the basement because the people that bought our homes on Cedric and here, our coats, told us how valuable it is for them to have an access to put the bikes during the day, lock them up during the day, at night, bring them in. Some of them have gyms they put in there. Yes, down the road, if they want to rent it, I'm not sure what, what the zoning allows for it. But right now, they're using it more or less for a mudroom. Now, in order to work with the city planners, I compromise. On one of them, we have the, the walk down on the, on this side. On the other one, we have in the back because we have ample, the back is over 60 feet wide at our homes. There's plenty of space and there's plenty of space between the two of us. I don't think there's an issue there in terms of privacy. And as far as, we don't need a permit. We are parking on my property. We need to get curb cuts, yes, but a permit, it's, we got a letter from transportation. It's not, I'm not using city property to park. And, and if you look at the house, what he has, if I was there today, it's, he has a 16-foot driveway, one parking garage. 16-foot is almost like two. So the two of mine will be exactly like his, eight, nine feet, each one of them. So not a big deal losing, that's not an issue. The community and the demographics need semi-detached homes. They're most desirable. They're young people, they're looking to move into neighborhood. To put anything, to put an 1,800 square feet is out of the question. Those are all bungalows. You can't do that. It's not going to happen. I, Cedric is about 2,700, sorry, Coates is 27. We scaled it down to 2,300 and 2,400. And we, there's no walkout. That's wrong. There is no walkout on the third floor. Total privacy. I, there is no, there's no porch, nothing. We have to have what's called a Juliet garage for the fire department to have access in case they, that's the rule, if you're above certain height. But there is absolutely no walk-in. In fact, in order to assuage him, we set back the third floor on his side. So there's plenty of sun coming in. We recessed the third floor about eight to 10 feet. That would be to the south. So not to, just for him, for his side. And the other house is recessed back. So we have, we did accomplish a lot with, because the committee told us when I was here last time, go talk to him. We only had one opportunity to meet at the councillor's office, at which time Brendan told him a 1.06, 07 FSI is routinely given in today's environment. As I said, at Saturday, we got 1.15. I didn't even ask for it. That's what she said, the planner, that's what you should, that's, that was a 32-foot lot. Yes, it's very narrow, but, and it's, he's right. There's about 10 inches setback on both sides.
So you don't have a variance for height?
I don't have a variance for height. No, we don't have a variance for height, no. We, we.
Okay.
So I, we tried as best we can to provide what's affordable. I did listen. It cost me a lot to change. I brought the thing in. There's quite a, quite a lot of space between our homes, quite a lot. Again, he does no, he has no entrance on that side, neither will we. So there's total privacy between the two of them. On the other side, the basement walk down is towards, towards the back. There's eight feet of space there, plenty of space if there.
You're getting to.
Too detailed.
You're getting to your time.
Yeah, okay. That's, I, I think it's, it's the right thing. Actually, I do thank him for, because of him, I did change the two semis as opposed to two detached houses. I did listen to him. And, and I told him, there's no malice involved at all. That's the way it is. I, I made a mistake by, by having the property. Before, I had 0.2, very, very close to him. Now we have about three feet, we have, we're quite far. And he's got four, we're quite far apart. And I think once it's there, everybody will be happy in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
And I think you should, hopefully you will approve it.
Do you have any questions or do you have a motion? Pardon? No, you've spoken already. Thank you.
But we got all the right information.
Well, actually, it was misleading in terms of the frontage of my house. I have the driveway and the sidewalk connected, which is one. That's why that measurement is perhaps what he assumes of their measuring it this morning. I don't know why. So I have, unlike the current property that exists, there's one driveway and a sidewalk in the middle. If you were to combine those two, you likely would end up with the same measurement.
My big objection would be height, as a right. Are you ready to make the motion?
I think so.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to propose that the application be accepted with recommendations from Transportation Services and community planning. There are three conditions under community, sorry, community planning and a recommendation from Transportation Services. With those in place, I move that we accept the proposal.
Consent to the severance and accept the variances.
That's right.
Prove the variances. Is there, I think there's one that requires a urban forestry consent. Is that, is this the one or?
No, not on forty-five.
No forestry? Okay, all right.
Second, given the fact that there was no height issue and by looking at the overall, you know, numbers and the proposal together, it is deemed to be minor.
Okay, so home favor. You have your approval, sir. Mr. Dale's here, back?
I think we've agreed with the neighbor at 24 Grange with Mr. Young that we're going to be okay with the 15-foot setback of this second story from that south wall of the existing single-story building. So I've got a sketch, a very kind of rough sketch here of what that would look like. We'll have to recalculate, figure out exactly what the GFA variance.
Changed that number.
Right, or is it, Leah?
What the FSI is?
It was a ratio proportionally reduced back and.
We spent the time, you know, working out to the agreement. If you could quickly figure out the GFA.
Maybe we try to help you, but.
No, of course, appreciate that very much.
We'll have this for you in one minute. The new FSI is 1.6.
And you trust for a calculation?
That's what we estimated about that.
So you acknowledge that, right?
How many square meters, Mr. Dale's?
That's the removal of.
What is the square meters in that area that's been removed? 15 feet per?
We have removed 30 square meters. But it's really about the deployment of where the FSI is that was the concern of. Oh, sorry.
What is, you say the floor space index is now 1.6 rather than 1.68. We need to know how many square meters that represents.
Of course. So instead of 674, sorry, I'm yelling. Instead of 674, you have 60.
Hi, sorry. Okay. So you had 674 square meters. That's on your page A00. Now you have 644 square meters.
And the FSI of 1.6.
All right. So, and the height is 11.61 meters in variation number one.
Correct.
Number one. Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, would you just come and tell us whether that's acceptable to you?
Yes, based on our meetings we had with the society, we were looking for about a 15-foot setback. And if that's what's agreed upon, then yeah, we would support the proposal.
But you do understand that what we are doing here is the variances, so you still have to trust that they will reduce that 15 feet per that, okay? It's just that I wanted to let you know that.
Yeah. Oh, you mean you won't make it conditional? That you'll prove it based on a setback of the wall of 15 feet? So that it goes on the record, right?
Yeah. Right.
Because it is the wall, because of the massing, right, at the property line. If it's backward, we can live with that.
So Mr. Dale's, Mr. Dale's, are you going to be filing revised plans?
We will, we will, we will. But if you tie it to the bylaws, if you tie it to the plans, if you tie the approval to the plans and we agree to a plan right now, then we're perfectly happy to do that. We will, we will not endeavor to, but we will undertake to implement the plan that we're agreeing on right now.
So the Deputy Secretary Treasurer says we should say something to the effect with respect to variance number two, that the floor space index will be 1.6. The square meters will be 6.44 square meters. And that will be accomplished by the applicant setting back the second story 15 feet.
Well, he's going to revise the variance, and then I would suggest that you add a condition, something to the effect that the south wall of the second floor of the rear portion of the building be set back 4. We have to speak in metric, so I think it's about 4.54 meters from the south wall or the rear lot line of 24. Because the wall, it's, the building's right on the lot line, correct?
Yes, right.
So from the rear lot line of 24 Grange. I'll work out the wording, but at least that way, the second floor has to be set back that 4.5 meters. I have 4.57. Is that satisfactory?
I have 4.572.
The variances will be amended. So if you approve it, it'll be approved as amended on that condition. And I don't believe there are other conditions. There was a report from planning and an email, but that's it. There is, there's no condition, oh. That was an old report, I believe.
Just the one in June.
Yeah, that was an old report.
That won't be carried to this.
There was a subsequent email.
What we're doing now is going to be the only condition. So that when you submit the building permit, that's the only thing you have to deal with.
They just filed a subsequent email.
Good, happy ending.
We need a motion. Just say approved as amended.
Yeah, I move that the request for variance be accepted as amended.
Favor of the.
The condition.
Yeah. Home in favor? You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
Can we end at 5:31? Okay, 5:30.
You're going to have to stay and sign your decision.